May I ask for screens on, please, colleagues? And I'll ask the clerk to confirm quorum.
We have quorum.
I also understand that councillor Cassidy is ill and able to attend tonight's meeting. I'm not aware of any other absences. Are you clerk?
I am not.
Thanks very much. So for the public, I'd like to welcome you to the sixth meeting of city council. We invite you to check the city's website for current details of COVID-19 service impacts. These meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the city website. The city of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council, stand unit or advisory committee meetings and information upon request. To make a request for any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or 519 661 2489, extension 2425. And with that, colleagues, I'll look for any disclosures of penury interest. I see councillor Hillier. I'll recognize you first, please.
Yes, I need to recuse myself from 8.4, number 11, 4.2, Rockford Park. My family does put on a five-day festival.
So noted. Thank you very much. Councillor Turner, I saw your hand up.
Thank you, your worship. With respect to number nine or 3.1 in the community protective services agenda, we have correspondence from a campaign worker and donor to my campaign, so I'm going to recuse myself from that and the receipt of that correspondence as well.
So noted. Thank you very much. Any other comments? I see Deputy Mayor Morgan, please.
Yes, thank you, your worship. On the seventh report of SPPC, item 4.3, which is appointments to the University of Western Ontario's Board of Governors, I'll declare conflict on that as Western University is my employer. And in the same report, item 3.1, part D of the Climate Emergency Action Plan, which has to do with memorandum of understanding between the city and the University of Western Ontario, I will declare conflict on that for the same reason. Western University is my employer.
Thank you very much. And as I recall during SPPC, we split that vote to accommodate some conflict of interest issues. Any other conflict, any other penury interest conflicts? Councillor Helmer, please.
Thank you. On the same items that Deputy Mayor Morgan just mentioned, I'll also declare penury interest as Western University is also my employer. And in addition to that, on the item 6.4, on the Community Protective Services Committee Agenda, which is about regulating short-term rentals, as I have rented out my own home on Airbnb in the past, and I likely would do so again in the future if I was away, I'm going to recuse on that as I have a penury interest on that front.
So noted. And I'm sure that all committee chairs have noted those conflicts. Any other conflicts or declarations of penury interest?
Mr. Mayor, one thing I'll say is I think I'm presenting the report from that committee, so I'll need someone else to present that item.
All right. We will, I'll look for you to direct that accordingly, and then we will go from there. Thank you very much. Any other disclosures? I see none. So with that, colleagues, we have two recognitions. And the first I'm going to call on councillor Pelosi for the first recognition. Councillor Pelosi, if we could, please.
Thank you, your worship. It's my pleasure to recognize Lloyd Grove tonight at council. I had the pleasure of joining him at Canadian Blood Services on Warrencliff Road while he donated his 1,400th blood product donation. He's done platelets, plasma, whole bloods. He is absolutely phenomenal and a proud Londoner, and he just encourages everyone to get out and give if you're able to as less than one eligible voter in 80 actually goes out. So it only takes a few minutes to save a life. Be like Lloyd. He is wonderful and such a pleasure to speak to. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I'll note your encouragement in that regard, councillor Pelosi, because you've certainly encouraged me amongst others to do the right thing, and thank you for that recognition of Lloyd. Colleagues, there is one second recognition. I'm going to stand for this if I can. Many of you may recognize the name Marvin Martin Rucker, but some may not. Marvin served as an alderman in London City Council between 1967 and 1973. Through that time, colleagues, he served with Mayor Stronach, McClure, Gosnell and Bigelow. And we found out that on April 1st, Marvin passed away in his 85th year. Just a little background, because I think it's appropriate as we recognize former council members, those who have made great commitments to this community. But Marvin will be remembered for his many years of devoted service to our community. He served the city as alderman, as indicated, from 66 to 72, was the Liberal candidate for Middlesex County in the 1972 federal election. He spent a number of years representing the people of London as a trustee and board member of Victoria Hospital, the Dearness Home, Family and Children's Services, the Humane Society, Eldenhouse Museum and Liberal Credit Union. He was also an adjudicator for the Ontario Assessment Review Board. I give you this by way of background as someone who dedicated his life to service. And to his widow Marsette, to his children, Lorraine, Mark, Andre, Christian and their spouses, and to his grandchildren, please, on behalf of London City Council, please accept our deepest and most sincere condolences. And so with that, I will ask colleagues, if we can just take, please, out of respect to Marvin Rucker, a few moments of silence. Thank you very much. So I'm not aware of any confidential matters to be considered in public, but we would like to change the confidential session order. So with that, what I'll be looking for is a motion to move item four, council in closed session, and third report of council to after stage 13 bylaws. With that, I see councillor Hillier moving, councillor Hopkins seconding, thank you. Typically, no questions or comments, so let's call the question if we can, please.
Councillor Van Meerebergen? Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you, colleagues. Item five are the minutes from the meeting held on March 22, 2022. And to put those on the floor, I'll look for a mover and a secondator, please. Moved by councillor Van Meerebergen, seconded by councillor Fife Miller. Any discussion? I see none. So with that, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thanks very much. Under item six, communications and petitions, we have a number of those within your package tonight. We have a couple of items in the, in 6.1, the Climate Emergency Action Plan. We have several items relating to under 6.2, 517, 521 and 525, Fanshawe Park Road East. We have under 6.3, the proposed outdoor patio capacity limit extension. We have one communication there. We have a number of communications relating under 6.4, short-term accommodation. We have several items relating to 6.5, Rock, the park one-time policy exemption request. So what I'm looking for is to do with this all in one motion where we take these various communications and we ensure that they are put into the appropriate sections for which they are related. And with that, I'll look for a mover, please. Councillor Lewis, seconded by councillor Lehman, thank you. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, let's call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thanks very much. Motion to which notice has been given, under 7.1, relating to the fugitive slave chapel relocation and restoration. I'm at the council for leave. A leave would be required prior to any discussion, which would require a majority. So I'll look to see if anyone wishes to take any action with regard to this issue. Councillor Lewis?
Thank you, your worship. Colleagues, I will be asking to seek leave to bring this motion forward and look for support on that.
Thanks very much. Do you have a secondator for that? I see councillor Pelosi, seconding. For this to proceed, it will require a simple majority. So with that, I will ask if there are any comments or questions with respect to the item on the floor. Councillor Lewis, is this, pardon me, councillor Van Holst, is this to do with the leave or is this to do with the actual item?
I think it's to do with the leave, but it's up to you. I see that it's being brought forward because of a deadline, and I think that makes it reasonable for us to provide leave for the item. So I'll support it.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions with respect to leave?
Just point of order.
Yes, councillor Turner?
I think seeking leave is just to be put. It's not for debate, but I'd look to the clerk to clarify.
Well, you know what, councillor Turner, from time to time, in fact, most times you're 100% correct, and you are again. So with that, no more discussion. We'll call the question. And if there are any comments or questions, we will save those for the actual item itself. This is to seek leave.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thanks very much. And councillor Turner, I was just having a little sport with you. Percent correct, as is the case. So on the floor, and I wonder for this purpose, I think it might be helpful in terms of informing our discussion, to hear from civic administration and some background on the chapel, just some brief comments that would be useful for that. Can we turn this over to staff to get some background, and then we'll see what course of action council would like to take? Ms. Livingston, please go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure what information you're specifically looking for to be helpful. What I can say is that generally, these kinds of requests go through the community grants process, which operates annually and on a multi-year basis. So that's the usual process that we follow, and the grant process is currently open. However, I understand that councillors are very aware of that, so I won't belabor it. I'm not sure what additional information you might be seeking right now.
I think just to put that on the table, that the community grants process is open, this is the intent behind where I believe this is going to be going. And maybe I will look to council to shape this discussion with a motion, and I think that will help us as well. But I think what you've said, Ms. Livingston, thus far is helpful. So I'll look to see if a council colleague would like to put this on the floor in a formal fashion. Councillor Lewis?
Thank you, your worship. I'll put the motion as circulated in the communication on the floor.
And do you have a secondator? Councillor Pelosi? Okay, comments, discussion. Councillor Lewis, let's start with you.
Thank you, your worship. I appreciate, since I'm putting this on the floor, you giving me the opportunity to go first. Colleagues, I'll try and, I know some other signatories of the letter have some other points that they want to make, so I'll try not to belabor them all. This is a time-sensitive matter, and this is exactly the reason the Community Investment Reserve Fund exists, to provide a timely pressure relief valve on things that don't fit within the normal budget process or within other granting application processes that we have before us. Yes, this could come as a business case in the next budget cycle, and we would deal with that in December or January. This could go through the London Community Grants Process, which guarantees nothing, because that's not a council decision. In fact, the adjudicators on that panel are not even publicly listed. They may have a very strong case, but there's no guarantee that this funding is approved. And even if it were approved through the London Community Grants Process, we are talking about an end-of-July sort of decision period, and then funds potentially being made available to the successful applicants in August. The fugitive slave chapel, as it's come to be known, really, I can't underscore this enough, needs to be addressed this summer in terms of relocation. It needs to get on a permanent foundation pad and have its envelope sealed prior to the winter months arriving. It's lost on no one around this horseshoe that the building is in a sad, sad state of repairs. And I think it's also impossible to overstate the importance of this building in terms of the history and heritage in our community. It's a cornerstone to the Black community's early days, in the early days of our city. I don't think anyone questions the heritage value of it. What's that question, I hope, for colleagues tonight, is the source of funding? And I believe I've made the case already on that. I just want to say with my tourism board hat on a little bit, though, locating this at Fanshawe Pioneer Village, which is a regional attraction, and where we have staff members with expertise in heritage preservation and restoration, makes a whole lot of sense. Frankly, I think this is where it should have been relocated right from day one. They will also be able to use the funding, if we commit to this tonight, to help leverage through Cultural Spaces Canada additional federal funding for the restoration. They've obtained $85,000 in fundraising through the community, so they're not even asking us to fully match the community's efforts. But they will be able to leverage those community dollars and our dollars into federal funding to complete the approximately $300,000 project. I really hope that you will support this. I think that integrating this into Fanshawe Pioneer Village tells a more complete history of our community to the generations of students and guests to our city who will visit that location every single year. It's an investment long-term in our tourism assets within the city. But I think it's also important to underscore that it's not an appropriate ask that would fit under the mat considerations, because it would be incredibly difficult for the village to illustrate how this would relate directly to increased hotel stays. As I said, it's a regional attraction, but many of the visitors are day visitors, so it's not going to necessarily result in increased hotel stays. But it will improve our city's overall tourism infrastructure for the long run, for generations to come. So I will wrap up there, and I'm sure others have some things to add to this, but I really encourage colleagues to support this. This is not an ideal situation. In other circumstances, there would be better ways to secure this funding. But the reality in having met with folks from Fanshawe Pioneer Village and the Community Steering Committee, which, by the way, has members from the Coordinating Committee for Black History Month, from Black Lives Matters, from the Congress of Black Women, all involved in it, this is the time to do this. If we wait, we may potentially lose it forever.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Fife Miller?
Thank you, your worship. And through you, colleagues, I'm not going to, I'm not going to speak to a lot of the comments that councillor Lewis has made, but I'd like to speak to a couple of additional pieces here. And I think first and foremost, I have the opportunity to walk past the building currently at least once a week, and I've probably done that for the past three years. The building is continuing to deteriorate at a fairly rapid rate. But I also think that there are vandalism concerns where the building is at right now. And I think because of those, the urgency on those two items alone make this ask that much more important. I also think bringing the slave chapel back into the light of conversation, one of the things that has opened is an ability for the community to work towards a final plan for this. We have to remember that it was almost seven years ago that this building was moved to its current location. But I think the most important thing here is, I've noted through the correspondence that I've received over the past week on this, since this has come out, the negative correspondence, to me, has reaffirmed our commitment to need to do this. There is a lack of understanding of not just what the slave chapel represents to our Black community, but what it represents to our community as Londoners as a whole. And I think this is imperative. I think as the letter says from Fanshawe Pioneer Village, the time is now, and I think the time is now to do this. I think the funding source allows us this opportunity, and I think as council, I really urge my colleagues to support this tonight to get the chapel into a secure, safe location where it can be restored, and the history of that be shared for decades to come. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Closer?
Thank you, your worship. And ever so briefly, not to touch my other colleagues' points, recognizing my background as a museum conservator by trade, I realize the importance of moving the structure as soon as possible, that it's sitting in an uncared-for state. And if they can't get approval to move this until the fall, it will not have an opportunity in 2022 to have the opportunity to be moved and stabilized before restoration work can even begin. I just wanted to highlight the point as well, amongst the wonderful committee that does such great work, the organizing committee, is also a former city councillor, hailed usher, has been involved in this and reaching out, asking for assistance. And I appreciate the timing as the budget chair of everything coming through at the ideal time, at the ideal spot. And just for me, this one, realizing the urgency of taking late today to discuss this, is the opportunity to commit some municipal funds to help this group further use that to raise private funds amongst the community and to leverage it for what they're hoping for, the cultural spaces for restoration work for Karen, for a grant. And throughout the letters as well, just highlighting that this will integrate in what Black settlers have done to help build our urban and rural communities for more than 200 years, and would have a place at Fanshawe as they come up on celebrating 60 years to make this part of public programming and having a conversation that's well-informed in celebrating this humble building and what it actually has meant to London and the surrounding area. So I am asking colleagues for support on this tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hopkins.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. And before I make my comments, I would like to ask a question for you to staff about the Community Reserve Fund and the availability of money. If this is supported tonight, are there funds available and will they be imminent?
I wonder if Ms. Barbone would answer that.
Yes, thank you, through your worship. The balance in that reserve fund is over $1 million, so there's absolutely funds that are available, should council wish to fund this request.
Thank you for confirming that. I think it's important that we know that we have the money and that it is available to us right now. I am going to encourage my colleagues to support this. And one of the important reasons why this should be supported, this expense, is just to move the chapel up to Pioneer, Fanshawe Pioneer Village. That's the cost that it's going to take to move the chapel. I want to thank Fanshawe Pioneer Village for having space and having a home for this chapel. We have a place for it to be moved to. I think, once it's moved, funding can be available to start to restore it, and it's open to the public. It's really important to understand and support not only the Black history in our community, but it's also about London's history. And I agree, Councillor Lewis, I wish we would have done this right at the beginning, but we haven't. But the community has tried over and over again, understands the importance of this chapel and the need to restore it. And I would encourage everyone on council to support this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Salee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think there's not much left to be said, but I wanted to add a couple of points. Really, I guess, they're just thanks. Just wanted to thank the collaborative approach my colleagues on council when bringing this forward, as well as I want to thank members of the community in particular, from Black Lives Matter, Black Women's Congress, and many other people involved in this process. It's been very much a team effort, and I think it shows by the support in the letters that you see before you today. And I'm really looking forward to seeing council support here tonight and welcoming it into, I guess, my part of the city in Ward Three. So I think it's very fitting and ensuring that we continue to have access for an important historical site, and ensuring that access is available to everyone. And I know I've had conversations in Fanshawe Conservation about ensuring that things can remain accessible. I know they're always open to more discussions, but we know that it's a little bit sometimes of a challenge to get to that part of the city, but I just wanted to, you know, point that part out, to not make it seem as if we're not aware of those challenges. But I think conversations will continue to happen, and I look forward to council's, sorry, council's support tonight. Thank you.
So, Councillor Salee, a slight adjustment to your comments amendment, I think it's the Great Ward Three is, I think, what you wanted to say. I'll turn, any other, there you go. Any other comments or questions? I'd like to turn this over then to councillor, to Deputy Mayor, please.
Thanks. I'll go to the mayor.
Thanks very much. Colleagues, Fanshawe Pioneer Village is the right place for the fugitive slave chapel. I'm not confident this is the right funding mechanism, because we have a funding mechanism has been pointed out in terms of our community grants process. If for any reason that was turned down, and I don't think it's quite as obfuscated a process as we would imagine, then we would always have the ability to do what we do as council colleagues, which would be to support through the fund, as has been suggested through this amendment. Look, I know Fanshawe Pioneer Village and work that's been involved there, I was involved in the Denfield General Store and moving, and I have a sense of it. I spoke with the executive director yesterday of Fanshawe Pioneer Village, and I said, what will it cost to move the slave chapel from where it is to the village? Her comment, $80,000. I said, well, that's great, because you've already raised 85 through community efforts, that's a great start. She said, but we also have to lay a foundation. I said, what's the cost of that? She said, oh, about $20,000. But I also know that, and we all know, that there's a fair amount of work that needs to go into the actual restoration and maintenance of the property. So I'm not challenging their overall $300,000 budget. I also understand the importance of leveraging the federal government's creative spaces component, which hasn't been mentioned, has been generally, I'm sorry, Councillor Lewis, generally about the need to do that. Here's my concern. I do not believe, and I want to be proven wrong, that by supporting this tonight, that this will have absolute priority from Fanshawe Pioneer Village to move it from its current location to where it needs to be. Here's my concern. A great discussion with the executive director, who I hold in great and high regard, and said, one thing to order a pad to be done, fine. Another for the tender process, to move from where it is today in a parking lot to where it needs to be at Fanshawe Pioneer Village. So when we sometimes talk about the great urgency of now, I fear that we're not going to be talking until fall. So I'm saying to Fanshawe Pioneer Village, assuming this gets approved tonight, and I do believe there's strong enough support, then prove me wrong. Get this done now. The point that's been made by several colleagues is that this should have been done well before this time. And the fact that it's rotting the way that it is, which means that London's history is rotting, I think that's shameful. But now that Fanshawe Pioneer Village has gotten the go-ahead, and you'll see in your communications, we've been given a birthday gift from the quote owner of the building. Well, you know what? Sometimes birthday gifts can come with price tags, but we're prepared to pay a price for this. All I'm saying is, I respectfully challenge Fanshawe Pioneer Village to move it as a priority, get it where it needs to be, and start to establish the process that needs to be done. If we're talking about $71,000 from our funds, the 85 that's been raised, more than enough to get it up there, at least to put it into the right spot, so what's the next piece? Then all the internal work that needs to be done, and some of the ongoing commitments to it as well. I get it. But they need to now, that they have assumed responsibility for this, please, please, play their part. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. And I will turn the chair to the mayor. I have no further individuals on my speaker's list.
And I don't have any other speakers on this list, so with that, let's call the question.
Motion carries 14 to 0.
With that, thank you very much. And Councillor Lewis, thank you for bringing that forward. Colleagues, we now have committee reports, and we will start with Civic Works, and I'd like to call on Councillor Pelosi, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's the fifth report of the Civic Works Committee before us. Before I do a high-level overview of the agenda, there was no split votes at committee, and I have not been given notice to separate anything out.
Thank you very much. Does anyone wish to have any item dealt with separately? Seeing none, I'll turn it back to you, Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will put all the 17 items on the floor then, just recognizing that the number 13, the Alade Street North CPR Underpass Project, had an irregular result. It came in over what we're expecting. Staff did give an overview of the project at committee and said inflationary costs, issues with tendering, some supply issues, labor costs was mainly the result, but they had scaled back and said how the project can still move forward with some extra funding. And as per item 17, the Kenmore Place sidewalk petition, staff clarified that this is the appropriate time to have that consultation and had no concerns with any of that. So as I said, there was no split votes, and that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from colleagues? Councillor Venmerbringen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. By way of commentary, number 14, 4.6, from the committee agenda, together with six, 2.5, dealing with the widening of Southdale Road, basically just past Wonderland West, to just west of Bostwick and Farnham, very much a good news story for southwest London. Drivers throughout the area, indeed from all over London, that have to take that route, which is extraordinarily busy, must be jumping for joy with this news. The fact that this is going to be happening in this construction season is very positive indeed, and will be very helpful for the southwest.
So noted. Thank you very much, councillor. Any other comments? I see none. It's been properly put on the floor, so with that, we will call the question.
Third call, councillor Helmer, if not, we'll mark you absent. Closing the vote. Motion carries 13 to 0.
Thanks very much, and thank you, Councillor Pelosi. Anything else for you?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, I'll turn your attention out to the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee report. Turn this over to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, colleagues. I'm going to present the seventh report of SPPC in the following way, given the unanimous votes and the conflicts contained within the report. I'd like to put items one, two, three, and six, which are the items in the report that no one had any conflicts on, that were all passed unanimously, on the floor first, and then I will proceed with the part of the Climate Emergency Action Plan that I can vote on, and then I'll have councillor Lewis take over the rest of the presentation of the report to present the final item on the Climate Emergency Action Plan, which I declared on, as well as the appointments to Western University. So unless colleagues have something they'd like dealt with separately, I'd like to put one, three, four, and six on the floor for consideration.
Does anyone wish to have any other item dealt with separately? I see none. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
I have no comments on this. It all passed unanimously at committee, so look forward to the vote tonight.
So on items one, two, three, and six, any comments before we call the question?
One, three, four, and six.
I lied. One, three, four, and six. Apologize for misrepresenting that. One, three, four, and six. I see no comments. We'll call the question.
Mr. Slossley Power, could you check the consent vote on that?
To the Chair, although the lead-in does not reflect the items, what's flagged in the system is parts one, three, four, and six.
Thank you.
Councillor Helmer? Are you able to vote? You're muted.
Sorry. If you could just tell me where we are in the agenda, I've been out of the meeting for the last minute and a half, two minutes.
We are at the seventh report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, voting on one, three, four, and six.
Not including the items I declared an interest on. Okay. I'm in favor.
Thank you. Closing the vote. Motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah. Climate Emergency Action Plan, item 3.1. In our agenda, there were four components to that, A, B, C, and D. Two councillors, including myself, declared a peculiar interest on D, so I'm happy to put parts A, B, and C from our report on the floor. So that's everything related to the Climate Emergency Action Plan, with exception of the memorandum with the University of Western Ontario.
So noted. Any comments on the first three sections of the Climate Emergency Action Plan? I know, colleagues, this was discussed quite extensively at SPPC, committee as a whole. Any other comments that would be helpful for tonight? I see none, so with that, we will call the question.
Motion carries 14 to 0.
Thanks. To you, Deputy Mayor, please.
Great. And what remains on the agenda is 3.1D, and then there's also after that, item five, which is Appointees to Western's Board of Governors. I have a conflict on both those, so perhaps I can hand it over to councillor Lewis to lead us through the rest of the SPPC agenda.
Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. So, colleagues, I will put item 3.1, section D, which is the memorandum of understanding with Western University on the Climate Emergency Action Plan on the floor.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions? Let's call the question.
Motion carries 13 to 0 with one recues.
Thanks very much, colleagues. In a moment, I will turn it over. Well, actually, I'll turn it right now back to councillor Lewis. I have a comment.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I'll put item five, that's 4.3 from the committee agenda, the City Appointees to the Western University's Board of Governors, on the floor now.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions? I do have one question I would like to make a comment if I can. So, colleagues, what you'll see here is a slight change of appointment date relating to the terms of our own civic appointments, Mr. Lerner and councillor Harold Usher. And I have to tell you, both have served with distinction. And as we accept this and then look for public appointments for this process, I do want to pay particular tribute to both of these individuals, who I think have done a tremendous job, and very grateful for their service. Thank you. Councillor Lewis.
We have no other speakers, Your Worship, so I think we can call the vote.
All right, then, let's call the question, please.
Motion carries 12 to 0 with two recues.
Thanks very much, and I think that's it for you, councillor Lewis. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, anything else for you?
No, that's all I had from that report.
Thanks very much. So councillor Helmer, if I might, I'm not here to put you on the spot, because we can vote in terms of whatever things we deem to be conflicts, but I think that you in committee of the whole had declared a conflict on the Climate Emergency Action Plan, which was the specific item clerked. And I just want to make sure, councillor Helmer, that you're good with all this, so that we can proceed, but if the clerk can just confirm back, please, and then we'll see if we need to take any further action. Thanks.
Thank you, your worship. I believe it was item two, 3.1, item D.
Yes, thank you, everyone. I did miss vote on that one. I should have abstained, and I voted in favor. The motion's actually about introducing the bylaw later this meeting, so I wasn't going to make a big deal about it and ask for reconsideration, but since it's now taken up a big chunk of time, we might as well reconsider, then I can abstain and clean it up right now.
Yeah, let's do that.
Rather than just abstaining on the bylaw.
Sure, councillor Helmer. Councillor Turner?
I'll move that.
Seconded by councillor Hopkins. Thanks very much. So with that, for reconsideration, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
And now I will look to... Back on the floor, please.
Thank you, your worship, and I will put this back on the floor.
As articulately said as you always can. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? With that, we'll call the question, please.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to zero with two recused.
For that, we just wanted to do this right, and thank you all for your attention to that. Colleagues, and now, anything else for you, deputy mayor? You are done.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thanks very much. So with that, Planning and Environment Committee, I am actually going to call on councillor Lehman, as he was chair for that committee, and over to you councillor Lehman, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'll be presenting the seventh report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I will be pulling number twelve, 517, 521, and 525, Fanshawe Park, Road East. I will also be pulling items five, seven, and ten. We have to go through a little housekeeping exercise on those. Excuse me? Just a second, please, your worship. Thank you. Correction, pulling four, seven, and ten, we have to do a little housekeeping, due to minor errors that we have to get corrected. So what I'd like to do, I've heard of no other items from my colleagues to be pulled. What I'd like to do is put the remainder on the floor, excluding items four, seven, ten, and twelve.
Does anyone wish to have any other item dealt with separately, other than four, seven, ten, and twelve, which will be dealt with separately? I see none, so with that, with those four exceptions, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you. Councillor Lehman?
Your worship, upon advice of the clerk, here's how I would like to proceed. I would like to put amendments, one at a time, to be voted on separately, first to four, then to seven, and then to ten. So I'd like to start with four. The rationale for this amendment is that the proposed bylaw had a typographical error and incorrectly listed 2954 Turner Crescent as 3954 Turner Crescent, so I would like to put that amendment on the floor. I'm looking for a second.
Do I have a second? I see councillor Turner's namesake for the street, and I think it's quite appropriate. Any comments or questions, then, colleagues?
As long as I don't have a conflict.
No conflict, I'm sure not. Thanks very much. By the way, I'll tell you, but Holder Way sometime by the airport, no conflict there either, so. I see none. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I would like to put an amendment on the floor to number seven, 1200 Commissioners Road East. The rationale is that the CSA5 Zone Variation is section 224E and not 224D, as stated in the original bylaw, and to the intent was to include the new permitted uses and regulations to CSA5 bracket two.
Thank you. Do you have a second for that? I see councillor Hopkins. Thank you very much. Comments or questions, colleagues? Councillor Van Hols, please.
Thank you, your worship. So my gratitude to the committee for supporting this. It's a great news story for the community.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, number ten, regarding 2520 to 2544 Advanced Avenue, 2475 to 2555 Bondur Road, and 2560 to 2580 Boyd Court. The rationale behind the amendment is the proposed recommendation in bylaw had a typographical error, inadvertently listed 2555 Bondur Road as 255 Bondur Road. I'd like to put that on the floor.
Thank you. Do you have a second? I see councillor Hillier. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councillor Van Hols?
Thank you. Just saying, it's pretty exciting to see that film production facilities could be in this location as well, so thank you.
And thank you. Any other comments or questions? I see none. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Councillor Lehman?
What I'd like to do now is put all three, number four, number seven, and number ten, on the floor as amended.
So noted. For that, I see councillor Hopkins seconding. Comments or questions? I see none. So with that, as amended, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Lehman?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to put number twelve regarding 517, 521, and 525, Fanshawe Park, Road East. On the floor, it came to council with no recommendation from the standing committee. It was moved, but a second there was not to be had, so that is where it lies with council.
I do believe that an amendment has been put forward, a recommendation. Councillor Hopkins, please.
Yes, thank you, worship, and there was no decision made at the Planning and Environment Committee. I would like to bring forward the recommendation that staff provided in the... At planning, as well as an amendment. I have circulated the amendment. I can read it, but I am looking for a second, or if you'd like me to proceed with the amendment to the staff recommendation, I can do so. Or do you...
Oh, you...
Do you want me to second?
We have received that, so I don't think we need that reread out, but I will say, do you have a second for that?
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, that's what I heard. I see councillor Lewis. Comments or questions? Councillor Hopkins?
Yes, I may. Thank you for the second, and I know the ward councillor is not with us tonight, so I would like to ask council support for the staff's recommendation, but also to include the E portion of it, which is to... That the approval authority be advised that in addition to the matters that are described in clause D, which there are a number of issues still to be determined, that consideration be given to limiting vehicles exiting the site to a right turn only onto Gary Avenue. And I would like to ask staff, for you, if there's concerns with this added amendment to the recommendation, as well as if we have had and supported other applications for traffic coming out of developments, in determining the movement of traffic.
I wonder if this might go to Mr. Barrett?
Thank you.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, through your worship. I'll speak perhaps to the second first. Certainly, looking at alternate means to deal with access negress from a development site as part of the site plan approval process is something that actually is part of that process. So the ability to look at other considerations, how we could address traffic flow from developments, is not something that is unusual or unexpected. With respect to the first part, certainly with respect to the motion that's on the floor, we have no issues with the motion. I just want to advise that, as we go through this process, this is a technical process, so understanding that this is council desire, and that this is something that we know is a significant issue in the neighborhood, it is something that we will take, and we will take back, to ensure that we are able to address this direction to the greatest degree possible, but I can't answer you specifically on the technical aspects of that, but certainly that's something we'll look at, and it is something that is, as I said in the first part, it's not untoward for us to be directed to look at, to address neighborhood concerns.
Thank you. Councillor Hopkins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Barrett, for that answer. We heard from the community loud and clear that safety and their neighborhood is a concern. I know from the ward councillor that a lot of work has gone into this neighborhood in creating a safe space. There's a school down the road. This development is going to add intensification and traffic into the neighborhood, and if we can mitigate it in any way, I think we need to do that. To me, it's part of thoughtful development, and we do have to be thoughtful when it comes to the concerns of the neighborhood that this development will have, and I am hoping that we can have support for this amendment moving forward. I think it's really important that we create a safe space in our neighborhoods when we do intensifications, and I know with infills in my ward, that is always a concern, and it is important that we take into consideration the concerns from the community and do what we can to assist the safety of the neighborhood. So with that, I'm hoping you will support the staff recommendation, as well as the amendment. Thank you.
And thank you. Councillor Lewis?
Thank you, worship, and I'll start by saying my apologies to councillor Turner that I had to leave PEC early, or he would have had a second at the committee level. For me, this is one that I'm happy to support. I too have had an opportunity to have a conversation with the ward councillor, and I appreciate that councillor Hopkins has brought forward on her behalf an amendment to address some of the traffic concerns. I have seen in other developments where the colloquial pork chop on the laneway access does prevent left-hand turns out of a development and requires it to be a right-hand only turn. I think that that will assist in terms of diverting any sort of cut-through traffic away from the school, people who are trying to avoid the heavier traffic on Fanshawe Park Road. And we did hear from the community, and I recognize that they're not in love with this proposal, but Fanshawe Park Road is one of the major arteries in our city, is an appropriate place for intensification. This is going to provide new residential units for people, and I think that at the end of the day, we have to ask ourselves, is there a legitimate planning reason to reject an application that the neighborhood doesn't like? And from what I've seen from our staff report, there is not a legitimate reason to do that, that this meets the requirements of our own planning, as well as the Provincial Planning Act intent. So I think that it comes down to, does this meet planning requirements? It does. Is there a reason to reject it under planning requirements? No. The ward councillor has brought forward an amendment to address one of the community's concerns, and when the ward councillor does that, I tend to listen to them. They're the ones whose neighborhoods are most impacted, so I'm happy to support this, and we'll look forward to further debate on this.
Thank you. I'll look to the deputy mayor, please.
Yes, I wanted to comment on this too, and thanks to councillor Hopkins for bringing forward the staff recommendation, as well as councillor Cassidy's suggested amendment. And I appreciate that councillor Cassidy had the time to circulate some of her rationale for proposing this. I was specifically interested in this one, because this is very, very similar to a development that occurred in my ward a few years back, a large seven-story building across from Masonville Mall, that backs onto single-family homes with a school along the access street, and one of the solutions that we were drawn to through that discussion with the community was the same sort of solution that councillor Cassidy is suggesting that the approval authority consider here, and that is a right-in, right-out. In my ward, it's along Hill Street, and the school is Masonville Public School, and I could tell you, that now being in operation for some time, it seems to be working quite well and providing a solution that the community has been very comfortable with. I mean, there were other things we did with that development related to setbacks and site plan issues too, in consultation with the community, but I want to echo what councillor Lewis said. You know, it's the ward councillors who know not just the issues that the development creates for the immediate neighbors, but their work through school travel plans and school communities on the impacts that these developments can have with flow through into the neighborhood. And so I know that the amendment is a suggestion to the approval authority to consider this. Certainly, I would express my strong support for such a resolution if it fits our staff's technical requirements, because I know it has worked well in other very similar situations. So my kudos to councillor Hopkins and councillor Cassidy for bringing forward what hopefully is a solution that will alleviate some of the community's concerns.
Thank you. I'm showing no other speakers on the list? I am. Councillor Turner, please go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. Thanks to my colleagues. I'm glad to hear some support generated for this. I didn't support councillor Cassidy's request at the time when I moved the motion, mostly because I didn't see it as much of an issue as was being presented. I know that there are concerns often, and almost in every development application, about the traffic impacts that will ultimately arrive within a neighborhood. The traffic analysis on this is low. The majority, the vast majority of people exiting that building are already going to Fanshawe Park Road. The majority, the vast majority of people exiting that building are already going to going to Fanshawe Park Road. A small number of them may go left instead into the neighborhood to avoid the the intersection if they were looking to turn left. I'm not completely opposed to that either. The 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 traffic impacts, as we saw with a previous application in that neighborhood, are primarily driven by the school traffic, not by the residential traffic. And the the number of residents in this neighborhood at any given time that that are going to be added to in terms of traffic by this building is, I I don't consider it to be material. I do understand the concerns. I I listen closely to every speaker. I understand that that the the development is different than what is predominantly found deeper into the neighborhood with terms of single-family homes. The location of this building is appropriate. It's a it's a low-rise building, a low-to-mid-rise building on Fanshawe Park Road, which is one of our busiest arteries. If there's a place for us to be placing density, this is one of those places. And the impacts into the neighborhoods are are going to be generally low. The the difference between four and six stories, I can appreciate the concerns with those. But four-story or six stories is supported by our official plan, both London Plan and the official plan. There are no special area policies that that speak against this proposal. So all our policy statements, Provincial Policy Statement, Planning Act, the the London Plan, the OPA-88, all of those are speak and are permissive of an application such as this as this. So I I know that those concerns were raised by the community, as I said, listen very closely to those. Our jobs as counselors are to take a look at our our policy framework. Those policies were built by Londoners and their inputs. And and we have to have to be really consistent with those, and where we don't have compelling arguments against our own policies, then we need to find in favor of them. So in this circumstance, I think it was appropriate. There was some concern about the amount of bonusing involved. The the reduction, it's an 80% reduction for 50 years on the units that are there, which ends up being in the multiple millions of dollars in terms of the 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 economic impact associated with those. And I I know we often have concerns about what affordable housing means, but in this circumstance, it probably ends up being 50% what the market rent in that building will be for those units. It's 80% of the average market rent. It'll be almost half of what the the actual rent will be for the other units within that building. So that that's a deep discount. It's not a huge number of units. But the the trade-off was for the lift amount extra that they can build, which was the extra two stories, and that's what we have to keep in mind. Obviously, we want to see as much affordable housing as we can. We'll continue to strive for that in every development, and I'm glad to see these coming forward every time we see an application. I think it's a it's a great application of policy, and it's one small way that we can help to increase the stock within our city. So very supportive of the application, and I hope my colleagues will be as well.
Thank you very much. I have no other speakers on our list. And so with that, we will call the question.
Your Worship, I'll verbally vote yes.
Thank you.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Councilor Lehman.
Thank you, worship. That exhausts the number of items on the seventh report.
Not exhausted at all, thank you very much. So with that, now we will turn to the fifth report of the Community and Protective Services Committee. I'll note, Councilor Cassidy has indicated her regrets. Councilor Helmer, might I call on you as Vice Chair to present the the committee report?
Thank you, I'd be happy to. I will put all of the items from the committee report on the floor. I'm not aware that anyone wants to pull anything, with the exception of number nine, three point one, which I have declared a pecuniary interest on, and I'll need someone else to move that afterwards. I see, Councilor Turner, did I miss one?
No, you didn't, but I'd like to, through your worship, if I could request four point two from the committee report to be pulled as well.
So we're talking three point one, four point two. Does anyone wish anyone else, any other item built was separately? I see none, so Councilor Helmer, we're putting all but three point one and four point two on the floor? Thank you. Any comments or questions with respect to the balance of those items? Councilor Lehman, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'd just like to briefly make a comment. At committee, I thank committee and staff for the process regarding the Oak Ridge Resident Engagement Results. This is a result of council approving a process by which we could get upgrades to this to the Oak Ridge Optimus Park. And thanks for their donation of the park and and the neighborhood essentially for their service for two years during COVID, as initially starting out as the first assessment center in the area. It was a terrific process that was unique, that staff undertook, getting multiple responses through email, social media, direct mail, resulting in winnowing down to thirty great suggestions for what could be done, and and those were put to a vote by those in the area, resulting in the winning vote, which is an upgrades to the tennis court facilities there. As well, there was a long-term portion of that process, which indicated the desire of the community to have us look at potential upgrades to the actual arena. This arena is a one-pad, single-pad rink that has the ability, was built to look at a second story, which would be most welcome at some point down the road, as we don't have a community center as such for my ward to use for various purposes, as are in other wards. So I will be pursuing that with staff as we go down the road. I'd like to say thanks to my colleague, Councilor Helmer. He has a Carling Heights in his ward, a similar situation where they're still acting as a testing center, I believe. At some point, we'll be going through this process as well. Councilor Helmer, it was his, actually, idea that he came up with, because I I know we were both looking independently of ways that our our various communities could be recognized. And I want to thank him for coming forward with an idea, including Ward Eight in the Oak Ridge area, as well with with his initiative on that. So I appreciate the collaborative spirit with the counselor. So thank you to council on behalf of Oak Ridge for recognition of their service during this COVID time.
Thank you. Any other comments, colleagues, with the exception of the two items having been pulled? Councilor Turner?
A quick question, if I might, with respect to two point six and Parks and Rec Master Plan. My apologies for not making this inquiry earlier. I'm just wondering with respect to the progress on a Farcason Arena that was originally within the Parks and Rec Master Plan. I understand that its repurposing has been postponed. It seems somewhat indefinitely as a result of COVID and and our progress on the master plan. I I don't see it reflected reflected in the report, however, that's through your worship.
Thank you. I'm not sure if that might be Mr. McGonigal, Mr. Stafford, Ms. Smith. There we are.
Thank you, and and through your worship, thank you for the question, Councilor Turner. We will be coming to council in the coming months with an extension to the current Farcason Agreement. We are just in the process of undergoing that with the Thames Valley District School Board. Until such time as we build our two-pad arena and have the southeast community center location, we still require the ice at Farcason Arena.
Councilor Turner?
Thank you, I appreciate that, just had inquiries from the community, so I'm glad I had the opportunity to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I see none, so with the exception of items three point one and four point two, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
So Councilor Helmer, it would appear that we require someone else to deal with that? Put that item on the floor? Does anyone from your committee, I'm looking at you, Councilor Hamu, to put that on the floor? She's so noted that she will. Comments or questions on short-term accommodations? Councilor Van Hooft?
Thank you, worship, and of course, we have, we had just received the the draft for the purposes of the community engagement and the pub the public participation meeting. I acknowledge the the people that have written in, some on both sides of this issue, but I think there's some important clarifications that have been made about this. I was taking a little course on the Constitution online, and it mentioned that a lot of times rights issues are are simply never discussed when there's a discussion of administrative convenience. And we're looking at a way to to better deal with nuisance parties. And I want to make sure that we did mention that, at least in my opinion, that people do have a right to purchase a property and fix it up and offer that as a as a short-term rental. And this is something many people have done. And and I think in in most cases, their their renters are not are not nuisance. And we can see from the the communications that it's certainly easy for them to put a stop to to a party and and simply remove the offenders if if there is a problem with the neighborhood. Neighbors are what are able to contact the the Airbnb organization itself, so it's very self-regulating. And and I think we need to to keep this, keep this in place. So I'm very loathe to say that people are are not allowed to do this thing, but I I do want to make sure that we're we're able to deal more effectively with the problems as they come up and the nuisances. And I I see there's a number of ways to do that. We could, for instance, write in our nuisance bylaw, simply define parties that at short-term rentals that violate the policies that are written as as nuisance. So there would be one thing, and that would allow us to recoup the the funds that we invest in order to send bylaw officers and police out there. And when those fines become more significant, then they'll act as a better deterrent. So I'm looking at some or hoping for some better deterrence. And I just wanted to ask through you to our staff if because, just to confirm, that they're in fact looking at some items like this and are are going to return to us with a report on that. So if I may, to you, perhaps, Mr. Katola?
I see the, Mr. May, this is all lit up, so why don't we start with him?
Through your worship, yeah, absolutely. We heard from over forty-four presenters at the meeting, and they had a lot of good points. So we're taking all that information back and providing some some analysis and options for council. So yes, we will be looking at a variety of different issues moving forward, or ways of addressing this moving forward.
Thank you, Councilor Van Hooft.
Okay, thanks, you, that's that I'm I'm encouraged to hear that. And I'm, I do believe that this is a valuable service that's provided here in in London. I think there's many reasons people look at short-term accommodations, and many of them not that short-term. So people will rent these for for months in order to do some important work here. And so that really does provide an important alternative. And so I I hope that we can deal with the the real problem, which was how to cope with nuisance parties in in a way that doesn't require us a lot of extra administration or bureaucracy or and 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 certainly depriving people of a chance to to make an income. And for some people, this is their sole income.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds, Counselor, please. That might have been the end, I'm sorry, I, okay, thank you very much. So with that, I will now turn turn to Councilor Lewis, please.
Thank you, worship. Well, I don't want to engage in in cross-debate through you with a fellow member of council. I can't let it go unresponded to, that somehow people have a constitutional right to ignore zoning, business permit, licensing, and other regulations that a municipality can impose. It is absolutely within our right as a municipal government to put zoning restrictions on pieces of land as part of our official plan. It is absolutely our right, as we do with every other class of business in this city, to require business licensing and and permits moving forward. So that is what is going on here. This is not just about nuisance parties, by the way, as Councilor Van Hooft indicated. You know, there are a myriad of issues that have arisen from this, from the character of the neighborhood and nuisance parties, certainly housing, the appropriateness of a fair playing field for the hotels that operate in their city, the accommodation of or the collection of the municipal accommodation tax, safety issues in terms of ensuring that units are properly inspected for fire egress, building code requirements, et cetera. So to bring it down to people can just do whatever they want with their properties, with all due respect, is not what we're discussing here. We have a draft bylaw that staff are going to incorporate some potential changes based on what we heard from operators and come back to us with a a future report. But I think it's really important to make no mistake here. We absolutely have the right and the jurisdiction to impose limits on how property is used. Remember, these are zoned residential properties. These are not commercial properties. And yet they're operating as commercial enterprises. And that is at the heart of the the issue here. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a contribution to this discussion? I see none, this is to receive the report. I will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to zero with two recues.
Councilor Hamu, I appreciate that. I'm going to turn this now back over to Councilor Helmer, please.
I believe you still need to deal with four point two, so I'll put that on the floor. This is the Rock the Park One Time Policy Exemption Request.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions? Councilor Turner?
Thanks, your worship. I just wanted to explain my dissenting vote on this one. We've had several requests for one-day exemptions and one-time exemptions, so it doesn't seem so one-time anymore. I believe there's there's also consideration at some point of of making this a little bit more permanent, too. We we hear continuously from residents within the neighborhood about understanding that that events are going to happen in in the park. The extensions continue to just kind of push the envelope on on how much should be permitted there. Often, this is kind of veiled as a as a charity enterprise. The reality is the the charities are are kind of that that foot in the door to an alcohol license to be able to to put a beer tent in place, from my understanding. And and so that ends up being a little more problematic. I think if we're going to talk about it, let's talk about it on its on its merits as an event within the city. I think it's great that we we have events like this. within the city, I think it's great that we have events like this, the question is to a degree. So I'm not opposed to Rock the Park in general, the question for me is whether we grant another one-time exemption and continue to see these come forward. So for that reason, I'm going to vote no at this time.
Any other comments or questions? I know the mayor has his hand up if he's recognized, but let's see if there's anyone else that wishes to speak. I don't think I can, I don't think I can recognize myself, so perhaps I'll look to the chair, if he'll recognize the mayor if I ask nicely.
Go ahead, Mayor Holder.
Thanks very much. Thank you to the community for their input with respect to the Rock the Park. Colleagues, I moved this at the last committee meeting, and a couple of things I want to go over and just clarify for the benefit of those who were to committee. Firstly, this is a promoter that twice, this would be three times now in the last several years if it's approved tonight, where we have given a five-day concert allowance. Councillor Turner is quite right, these one-off type situations, frankly, probably aren't helpful, but I think at some stage, we may well have to deal with that, too. But that is not the question tonight. The question tonight is, are we prepared to offer to Jones Entertainment, who in my view is a first-class, first-rate promoter, who's extremely responsible in the work they do, the ability to run for five days straight? One thing I'd like to clarify, I don't think I've ever seen this as a charity concert, per se, as much as charities are involved, often with sweat equity, they get certain financial supports from the promoter, and there may be some other ancillary benefits as well to the charity, but let me tell, and to the promoter, but I will tell you, they certainly work for their money as charities. The second thing I would add is that when we were dealing with the early stages of COVID, you know, one of the things we had to deal with was the reality that we needed promoters to self-regulate, to say, you know what, maybe these are events we won't do right now, because there were so many unknowns with regard to the impacts of COVID. Can I tell you this, and I spoke with all of them, Jones Entertainment was the first to voluntarily withdraw the Rock the Park event as an acknowledgement of what we were trying to do, because they believe, as we on council have all tried to do, and that is to keep Londoners safe, so I think kudos to them. Final thing I'd like to add, London's a city of music. I think we're still yet to define what all of that means, and I think there are some exciting opportunities, and when I look at the entertainment district, can I imagine, as I see entertainment today, I was joined by Councillor Fife-Miller and the Deputy Mayor as we acknowledged London clean and green, and guess where we were, folks? We were at Lebat Memorial Park, oldest natural baseball stadium and grass in the world. And is that entertainment? You betcha. And all we had to see was the IBL champions and some of the slavish behavior by Councillor Squire at the time, and probably Councillor Lewis, it was almost embarrassing, their strong support for these teams, but deservedly so. Harris Park's part of that as well. So it's my hope, colleagues, that we'll all come in behind this and support this, and if there's going to be other considerations in the future, we'll deal with that in terms of any bylaw that might, but, that might be required. But tonight, I say let the music play. Thank you, Chair. Anyone else wish?
Chair of the meeting, back over to you.
Thanks very much. That was a little weird, but thank you. Any other comments or questions with respect to this? Seeing none, let's call the question, please.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to one with one recuse.
Thank you very much. Councillor Helmer, anything else for you? I'm sorry, I turned away, I think you shook your head no.
Nope, that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you kindly. All right, and for the fifth report. Excuse me, colleagues, of the Corporate Services Committee, call Councillor Lewis, please.
Thank you, Worship. I've not been made aware of any items individuals want specifically pulled to vote on separately, although I suspect that Councillor Hopkins may wish to speak to us about the AMO item. She gave a great overview at committee, and she may want to share that with all of council. But we did have some good debate on some of these items. We did, however, pass them all unanimously, so we didn't have any divided votes.
I will say, if I can, Chair, that the, we have established the practice that we do not need to pull the item we voted on separately if a colleague wishes to discuss it, which is why we always come back through. Does anyone wish an item to be dealt with separately for voting purposes? Councillor Helmer.
Item three, or four, two point three, the 2020 tax policy, please.
Thank you. Any other items, colleagues? Councillor Van Merbergen.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could pull two point six, I'd like to vote on that separately.
So noted. Any other items, colleagues? So appreciating, and we're assuming that Councillor Hopkins wishes to speak to AMO, I hope she will, but I will tell you, we are going to be voting in a few moments on items with the exclusion of two point three, two point six. Before we vote on those items, any comments or questions? Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment on number five, which is the 2022 education tax rates. I just want to comment about the report. So as we recall as a council, back in the end of 2020, the provincial government changed the business education tax rates after a long series of lobbying from the City of London, which concluded in us pulling together a number of partners, and I know Mayor Holder, myself, and Councillor Helmer did quite a lot of work on that, to the point where that change was made, and even Mayor Holder and the City of London were mentioned in the provincial budget. And in this report, it shows, you know, why that was so important, and remember, this was an issue of fairness, to equalize the business education tax rates amongst those who had been paying at the old rate and those who'd been paying at the new rate. The province went even further than our request and lowered it to point eight eight, and what that means for London businesses is an annual savings projected by our staff of almost $21 million every year. And as we know, through the pandemic, that sort of relief to London businesses could not come at a better time as we move forward towards the recovery phase of the pandemic. But the report also highlights an important consideration for council to be aware of, and that is, with that reduction of business education taxes, there is the possibility that we receive different payments under the payment in lieu of taxation program. And I know Mayor Holder has already written a letter to the federal government saying that we certainly don't want to see a decrease in the amount of revenues that the municipalities would receive from this. It is an issue that's on the horizon, and the magnitude of this is not insignificant. It could result in almost a quarter of a million-dollar hit to our budget, so very good for London businesses. It has been good for the city because we certainly have not taken that hit yet, but an important lobby position on the horizon that I know AMO and us and others have taken up, so something to be aware of in the future and something to continue to work on. But overall, a very good news story for London businesses on those education tax rates as we move forward at the new lower rate, so I wanted to add those comments today. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any other comments with respect to this item? On the education tax? Any other comments, colleagues, wish to make on any and all of the items, with the exception of the two that have been pulled? Councillor Hopkins, please. Councillor Hopkins? We need to take you off mute? Actually, you need to take you off mute, there we go.
Yeah, I need to take my house off mute, too, Your Worship, so thank you for giving me a moment to be able to do that, and I hope, colleagues, you were able to review the update from the AMO board of directors that I sit on, and it's really been a conversation at AMO for all municipalities, big or small, on housing, and AMO has come up with a blueprint that recognizes the importance of housing in our community, and as you go through the report, you can see the importance it underlines on affordable housing. It's got its blueprint, it's made recommendations to the provincial government. I have been very honored to be a part of that conversation with the provincial government on behalf of the City of London. We've had really great conversation underlining the importance of affordable housing, the need for federal and provincial funding as well cannot be just mentioned. There's just such a need that for us to deal with affordable housing, we need that collaboration and partnership with all governments, and it has been, I hope you get an opportunity to look at that blueprint, it is very, very important to all municipalities, and there's full support at the AMO board on this housing blueprint. It, I would also like to just give you an update, I do chair the Large Urban Caucus, and at the Large Urban Caucus, we have a continuous conversation at the AMO board about the importance for social supports for Social Services Relief Fund. I know there was an announcement to continue that, that is so important to help municipalities deal with the challenges coming out of the pandemic and dealing with economic recovery. We can't do it alone, we need those supports from all levels of governments, that has to continue. Daycare, $10 daycare has also been a conversation that large municipalities really, really have been pushing for that, and I am glad that the province has come forward supporting that. The affordable housing just continues to be an ongoing conversation with the Large Urban Caucus, as well the mental health and addictions. That is something that large municipalities, all municipalities, but the Large Urban Caucus in particular, is constantly pushing the importance of the need for supports to all municipalities, and I think we have to continue having those conversations. I know you, Worship, you're on the OBCM, and we, the Large Urban Caucus at AMO, sort of align with OBCM, the Ontario Big City Mayors, in trying to push, encourage the government to support municipalities as we try to be whole, as we deal with economic recovery. So with that, I hope you get to read the housing blueprint, it's got some great recommendations, and just hope the provincial government is listening as well, so thank you.
And thank you, and for your work on AMO as well, sincerely, from all of us, thank you. Any other comments or questions with respect to all but the items that are dealing with separately? I see none, so with that, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, I do see that Councillor Hopkins is, has her hand up.
Was there a question you had?
No, and my apologies for being out of order, but it is, I missed a very important part of my comments. I want to thank city staff, Nick Steinberg and Adam Thompson, for their support. There's absolutely no way I can be at the AMO board without their support, and without a doubt, my thanks to city staff for their continuous, ongoing support, because it just does not take one person to make this happen. Thank you.
Very appropriate, thank you very kindly. With that.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you very much. I think you snuck that in just at the very last moment, Councillor Hopkins. All right, so with that, back to Councillor Lewis, please.
Thank you, Worship. I will put item four, this is two point three from the committee agenda, the year 2022 tax policy, on the floor. This was pulled by Councillor Helmer.
Perfect. Any other, any comments that anyone wishes to make? Let's go to Councillor Helmer then, please.
Thank you, colleagues. I want to explain why I'm not going to support leaving the tax ratios the way they are this year. I did last year a support, given everything that was going on with the pandemic, essentially leaving things as they are and just making no changes. But the fundamental problem of having the high, relatively high multi-unit residential tax ratio remains, and where I see this going is, over time, we're going to steadily decrease it until we get it down to the same rate as what the residential class and the new multi-residential class, which of course is already down at the same rate as the residential class. And until we do that, and I do think it's going to take some time, we're going to have this situation where some higher-density buildings are taxed at a much higher rate than others, you know, condos are taxed at a low rate, and things that are not condos are taxed at the high rate, things that are new are taxed at a low rate, and things that are older are taxed at the high rate, all the single-family residential is taxed at the low rate, and the higher-density seven or more self-contained units is taxed at the high rate. And, you know, I just don't think it's right, I never have thought it's right, I think we have to resolve this unfairness in the tax system, and I think, rather than leaving things the way they are, we should be taking a small step towards getting to equal rates over the long term this year. I know that means pushing the tax levy from this property class onto the other property classes, I know people don't generally want to do that sort of thing, but I think the longer we put it off and skip years without making any small changes, the harder it's going to be in the long run to deal with it. So this year, I'm not willing to just leave it the way it is, I think we should make another small bump down this year, and then do another one next year, and the one after that, until we finally resolve this unfairness. It's in some ways been made worse by the introduction of the new multi-residential tax ratio, which has to be down at the same level as the residential one. Obviously, that's stopping the problem from getting worse, it's contained the problem, and we're not going to keep adding new buildings at the high rate, but, you know, I don't think it, I don't think it's right that we've got these older buildings, higher density, that are carrying the highest property tax burden of any residential property in our community, including, as I pointed out before unsuccessfully, our own social housing buildings. So I would like to just vote against it. If that were to fail, I think we could propose an alternative tax ratio for multi-unit residential that's just a bit lower, not dramatically lower, and make a small changes.
Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries twelve to two.
Thanks very much. Councillor Lewis?
Thank you, Your Worship. I will put the final item on the floor now, that's item seven, two point six, from the committee agenda, the elected officials and appointment of citizen members 2022 remuneration.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions? I have no one on the speakers list, so with that, we will call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries- Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 1.
That is it for the fifth report of the Corporate Services Committee, your worship.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, there are no deferred matters, but I do have an inquiry. So with that, I'll turn this to Counselor Turner, if I could, please.
Thank you, your worship. We got to that point really quickly, so I appreciate the opportunity to ask, if I might, for you to, perhaps Mr. Mather's. I've had a number of inquiries about construction noise, especially prior to 7:00 AM. I know that back when we had the first stay-at-home order, afterwards, the provincial government kind of suspended those noise bylaws to allow for the industry to try and catch up to some of that deferred and delayed building. But we're a couple of years later right now, and it seems that those construction starts continued to persist prior to 7:00 AM. Just wondering if that provincial order is still in effect, and if there's any options that we have as a municipality to address these concerns.
Mr. Mather's, do you have a response?
Your worship, we are now in a position to be able to enforce the sound bylaw once again, so the provincial exemption has been lifted. So if we are provided, our bylaw department is provided with an address, then we can go through our normal process of putting people on notice, and then going through the AMP protocol required.
Counselor?
That's for you, your worship. Thank you, Mr. Mather's. If I might, just as a follow-up, is it possible to put that information out through, say, something like the London Home Builders or any other industry representatives, so that it might be hard to do it on a complaint basis, rather than letting the industry know as a whole?
Mr. Mather's?
Through your worship, that would be no problem. We meet very regularly with them, so I will pass along that information. Thanks.
Counselor Turner?
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you as well. Colleagues, there are no emergent motions, and so I'm just going to share with you what we're going to be doing in terms of bylaws. We are going to be dealing with bylaws 155 through 174, and added bills 176, 77. But we are going to be excluding Bill 167, which is a conflict due to Rock the Park, and bylaw 175, which has been pulled due to complaints, or conflicts, excuse me, not complaints, conflicts associated with Western. So with that, colleagues, what I'm going to be doing... Counselor Helmer, you have something to add, please?
Could you also pull Bill 156 separately?
So noted. So this will be a tongue twister, but humor me then. Thank you. Does anyone wish any other bill pulled separately for voting? Counselor Turner?
Your worship, if I just might seek clarification, I think you mentioned Bill 165 due to a conflict with Western. Those are part lot control bylaws with...
No, 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 that was 175.
My apologies. Thank you, sir.
Yep. And that's why I say it's a little convoluted, but we'll get to the right place, I promise. So here is the plan. We are going to be looking for a mover and second for introduction and first reading of bills 155 through 166, 168 through 174, including revised bills 165, 172, and 174, and added bills 176 and 177. Oh, excuse me, and we are excluding, thank you very much, clerk. Counselor just went, made that point, and 156 will be excluded as well. So do I need to repeat that? Are we kind of good? Counselor Van Holst? You're moving. Okay, great.
Happy to move those.
Thank you kindly. Is there a second? Counselor Hamu, comments? Oh, no comments, questions? Let's do a vote.
Counselor Hillier? Counselor Hillier? Third call. Counselor Hillier will mark you absent. Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
For second reading, we'll be looking for a mover and seconder of the following: bills 155 through 166, 168 through 174, including revised bills 165, 172, and 174, and added bills 176 and 177, exclusive of bills 156, 167, and 175. Counselor Lehman to move. Counselor Pelosi, second. Thank you. Comments or discussion? I see none. Let's call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
Now, I'll be looking for a mover and second for third reading and enactment of bills 155 through 166, 168 through 174, including revised bills 165, 172, and 174, and added bills 176 and 177, exclusive of bills 156, 167, and 175, which will all be called separately. Counselor Hopkins, thank you. Counselor Van Mirbergen, seconding. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
Colleagues, we'll now be dealing specifically with Bill 156. I'll be looking for introduction and first reading. Counselor Fife Miller, seconded by Counselor Hamu, thank you very much. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
Second for Bill 156, second reading. Moved by Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Van Mirbergen. Any discussion? I see none. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 1.
Colleagues, I'll be looking for a mover and second for third reading enactment of Bill 156. Moved by Counselor Fife Miller, seconded by Counselor Pelosi. Thank you. We'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 1.
Now going to deal with Bill 167, that is the Rock the Park, pulled by virtue of a conflict declared by a colleague. So with that, I'll be looking for a mover and seconder for introduction and first reading of Bill 167, Counselor Van Mirbergen, seconded by Counselor... I did do third reading and enactment. I actually hope you voted. Okay. All right. So with that, colleagues, I'll come back to this. I apologize. 167, the Rock the Park bylaw, I'm looking for a mover, and I had moving Counselor Van Mirbergen, seconded, I believe, by Counselor Lehman? Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you. Let's take the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 1.
So colleagues, now, again, for the Rock the Park, we will be looking for a mover and second for second reading of the bill. Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Fife Miller. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 1.
Finally, for third reading enactment of Bill 167, dealing with Rock the Park, I will be looking for a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Lewis. Let's call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 1.
Thank you. And colleagues, Bill 175, with the conflicts associated with Western. So with that, what I'll be doing is looking for a mover and seconder for introduction and first reading of Bill 175. Moved by Counselor Pelosi, seconded by Counselor Fife Miller. With that, we will call the vote.
Closing the vote, motion carries 12 to 0 with one requise. Counselor Helmer? Counselor Helmer?
Yes?
Just want to confirm the vote. This is Bill 175?
We can read lips, Counselor. I think you said abstain.
Oops, yeah.
Ms. Wesley Power, is that... Is that possible?
We're just getting clarification from the clerical colleagues.
Good, Chair. I'm sorry. I had already closed that vote, so I can't back out of it.
I can announce that it would be 12 to 0 with two requises, or sorry, 11 to 0 with two requises.
So noted. So with that, colleagues, now, we will be looking for a mover and second for second reading of Bill 175 associated with Western. Moved by Counselor Hamu, seconded by Counselor Lewis. Thank you very much. Any comments or discussion? I see none. Let's call the question.
Confirming Counselor Hamu and Counselor Lewis?
That's correct.
Closing the vote, motion carries 11 to 0 with two requises.
Colleagues, finally, relating to Bill 175 regarding the Western conflict, I'll be looking for a mover and second for third reading and enactment of said bill. Moved by Counselor Fife Miller, seconded by Counselor Hamu. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 11 to 0 with two requises.
So for the benefit of the public, in a moment, I'm going to ask the clerk to confirm to the public as to why we are going into a closed session. You will call this one of the items, this is to the public, that we moved to this portion of the agenda. And it is our intention from this, from confidential session, to move back into public session once the items are dealt with. So with that, can I ask the clerk to confirm the reasons we go into public session, or confidential session, excuse me?
Thank you, your worship. The matters to be dealt with in closed session are the six matters that are outlined on the public council agenda. There are three items related to the proposed or pending acquisition of land, along with solicitor-client privileged and related advice; two matters related to litigation or potential litigation and related solicitor-client privileged advice; and one matter subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose with respect to the second report of the Animal Welfare Advisory Committee.
So with that, I'll look for a mover to go into confidential session. I see Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Fife Miller. Let's call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 13 to 0.
Thanks very much, colleagues. We just need a few minutes to do the transfer over and to move the appropriate personnel into closed session. So just bear with us a few moments, and we'll ask you for screens on at that time. Thank you. and we'll ask you for screens on at that time. Thank you.
Colleagues, can I have screens on please?
And we have Coram.
Thanks very much, Clerk. I'm going to call on Counselor Fife-Miller to report out of closed session, please. Put the report on the floor.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. The sixth report of the council in closed session. Your council in closed session reports. Number one, property acquisition at 136 Wellington Road, the Wellington Gateway Project. That on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, finance supports with the concurrence of the director, construction and infrastructure services, on the advice of the director, realty services, with respect to the property located at 136 Wellington Road, further described as part of lot 25, broken front concession, geographic township of Westminster, designated as part one, plan 33R-2911, being all of pin 08358-0004 bracket LT, containing an area of approximately 4,811 square feet, as shown on the location map. For the purpose of the future road improvements to accommodate the Wellington Gateway Project, the following actions be taken. A, the offer submitted by Valdez Joseph Ordus and estate of Louise Mitroordus, the vendor, to sell the subject property to the city for the sum of $509,000 be accepted, subject to the terms and conditions set out in the agreement. And B, the financing for this acquisition be approved, as set out in the source of financing report. Two, agreement of purchase and sale of assets from London Hydro, former substation number 36, at 1131 Kaleli Road on the Meander Creek Park. That on the recommendation of the deputy city manager, finance supports with the concurrence of the director, parks and forestry, on the advice of the director, realty services, with respect to the agreement of purchase and sale of assets from London Hydro, located at 1131 Kaleli Road, as shown on the location map. For the purpose of renovating the building into a field house along the Thames Valley Parkway, the following actions be taken. A, the agreement of purchase and sale of assets submitted to London Hydro, the vendor, to sell the building and assets to the city for the sum of $5,000 be accepted, subject to the terms and conditions set out in the agreement. B, the bill of sale submitted by London Hydro, the vendor, in connection with the sale of the building and assets referenced in the agreement of purchase and sale of assets be approved. And C, the financing for this acquisition be approved, as set out in the source of financing report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Lewis, thank you very much. Any discussion? Counselor Van Mirburgan?
Yes, I just wanted to correct me if I'm wrong, but 6.1 and 6.2 are both on the floor currently.
Yes, they are.
Could we separate 6.1 from that so I could vote on that separately?
Yes, we can do that. So with that, we will, we will deal with 6.1 first. Clerk, just for the benefit of all, just clarify precisely, please, what it is we're voting on with that separation, please, because we will be, colleagues, we've got two added bills to, to deal with. One is the Wellington Gateway, and the second deals with Kaleli Road acquisition. And those will be two separate, those will be split as well, the bylaws, so you know, just to satisfy some of the concerns previously expressed. Clerk, if I could, please.
Through you, Your Worship, the first matter relates to 136 Wellington Road, the Wellington Gateway Project. The second item will relate to 1131 Kaleli Road, Meander Creek Park.
So the items in this report will mirror the bylaws that we'll be voting on. So with that, 6.1, the Wellington Gateway. We have a mover and a seconder.
I'll vote manually yea.
Thanks. So all those, so we will now call the question, and Counselor Saleed is yes. 6.1, colleagues.
Closing the vote, motion carries 10 to 1.
My colleague's deals with Kaleli Road has been put on the floor by Counselor Fife-Miller, seconded by Counselor Hopkins. Thank you very much. Comments or questions? I see none, we'll call the question.
Yea for Counselor.
Closing the vote, motion carries 11 to 0.
Colleagues, we will now deal with these added bills. The first impacts Wellington Gateway, and this will be first reading. I'll be looking for a mover and seconder for introduction, first reading of added bill 178, moved by Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Van Holst. Thank you very much. We'll call the vote.
Yea.
Closing the vote, motion carries 10 to 1.
Again, on the Wellington Gateway, I'll be looking for a mover and seconder for second reading of added bill 178, moved by Counselor Fife-Miller, seconded by Counselor Lehman. Thank you very much. Any discussion? I see none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 10 to 1.
Third reading, I'll be looking for a mover and seconder for that third reading enactment of added bill 178 on Wellington Gateway, moved by Counselor Hopkins, seconded by Counselor Lewis. Thank you very much. We'll call the vote.
Yea for third reading on.
Closing the vote, motion carries 10 to 1.
Thank you. Now, the final bill we'll be dealing with is the, is related to Kaleli Road. Production, first reading of added bill 179, look for a mover, Fife-Miller, seconded by Counselor Hamu. Thank you very much.
Counselor Saleed?
Yea for me.
Thank you.
Closing the vote, motion carries 11 to 0.
79, I will be looking for a mover and seconder for second reading of this added bill, moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Van Holst. Thank you. Any comments, questions? I see none, we'll call the question.
Second reading.
Thank you.
Closing the vote, motion carries 11 to 0.
And finally, colleagues, I'll look for a mover and second and enactment of added bill 179 dealing with Kaleli Road, Counselor Van Mirburgan, seconded by Counselor Van Holst. We'll call the question.
Yea for third reading.
Thank you, Counselor Saleed.
Closing the vote, motion carries 11 to 0.
Thanks very much. Colleagues, adjournment, you'll know that we've gone through Public Health Week, and we had the opportunity to pay particular attention and acknowledgement of our great public health teams, administratively, frontline, everyone there. And I had the privilege to represent council colleagues at, at the Middlesex London Health Unit on Friday, and it was a very, I thought it was a very special day. I'd like to remind everyone, it's Wear Pink Day tomorrow for those who have, who have that in their wardrobe, I think it's totally appropriate. Finally, Ms. Livingston, to your staff, to our clerks, to everyone that keeps this well-oiled machine oily, I just want to say thanks very much for the work that you do. It really does matter. And the longer I've been here, the more I've come to appreciate the tremendous amount of effort it takes. So colleagues, thank you all, and I know I join you in thanking our staff as well. With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn, Counselor Van Mirburgan, seconded by Counselor Fife-Miller. Is it okay if we just show of hands? Apparently, we can. So all those in favor, and you're silly if you don't.
And that carries.
And it carries. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned. We'll see you all soon. Thank you.